I would like to call to order the October 13th, 2020 meeting, the regular meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you so much for joining us. We're very excited to be coming to you live if you're able to watch. Thanks for tuning in with us. We're thankful to our technology department for working so hard to make that possible for us and for all of you. Hopefully, we can connect to you. Before we begin, I would like to read a little statement here that says, "Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D.021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. The school board members are reminded to mute their microphones or phone when they are not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should raise their hand then wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute their microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded. Access to this recording will be available now, I guess, and on the school district website as soon as reasonably possible." All right, our mission statement. Creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation.
Natalie, you want to do a roll call?
Oh, yeah, let's do that. That's great. Thanks, John. Can we do a roll call, please, Molly?
A Samurai.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Lewis, here. Superintendent Stenvik.
Here.
Looks like we're all here. Thank you, Molly. Thank you, John. Again, we have a mission statement and core values, and we are proud of them. We will begin by agenda approval, adjustments, and announcements. If I could get a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
John?
Second.
Lorian? All right, any discussion? All right, roll call, please, Molly.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Great. Announcements, October 20th at 7:00, or sorry, at 5:30 PM, we'll have a school board work session here in the community room and via electronic means. On October 27th, Tuesday at 7 o'clock, there'll be a regular school board meeting, again, here in the community room and via electronic means. On November 10th, Tuesday at 5:00 PM, there will be a school board subcommittee on policy via electronic means. And on November 10th at 7:00 PM, there will be another regular school board meeting here in the community room and via electronic means. Superintendent Stenvik, is there any correspondence?
Chair Severson, there's no correspondent at this time.
All right, thanks so much. Community, or sorry, communication to the board. Citizen and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at meetings, at this meeting on request presented at this time. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report and the minutes from the September 8th and 22nd regular school board meetings and the September 15th work session. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Lorian?
Second.
Second, Laura, any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, let's do a roll call, please.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. And Holla, I got to say, that's the most dramatic answer to a roll call I've ever heard in my life. So, very nice.
Holla's on there twice, so I think maybe...
Yeah, there's two Hollas right now, so I'll let that be between you and Brian. We'll just keep rolling here.
Her picture's up now, too.
Yeah, to get the picture, I see. All right, moving forward, we'll move on to discussion, reports, and information items. We'll begin by hearing reports from members of the board. So let's start with our digital friends. Molly?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself. I actually don't have anything to report out on except watching some of our athletics that are carrying on via electronic means. Just a quick shout out to all the people that are making that happen and providing that to the parents for no charge. It's very much appreciated, not only by me, but a lot of other parents. So, thank you. That's it.
There you go. Thank you so much, Molly. We'll move on to Holla.
All right, I attended a parent meeting at the high school for juniors, and then I had a phone meeting with Superintendent Stenvik.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Laura.
I had, I attended the monthly 916 board meeting. We had a very extensive update on the plans, on the steps for being able to hold classes in all the phases. It's extremely extensive, down to figuring out in each program where the staff is located and being able to determine whether or not that program can be opened. But they're working really hard at it, and it's a big job. I truly, and I cannot believe how much detail is in that program. And if anybody wants to take a very close look at it, it should be available on the 916 website. And the other thing is that we did actually have a fairly good discussion and consensus on the process for being able to search for a new superintendent over at 916. We're sending out an RFP for... Did I say that right? I think I did. Yeah, for looking for the scope of what we're, for a search firm. So we're trying to find a search firm. We're hoping that we can have some sort of candidates to start doing interviews with, hopefully, December. So we've got a pretty aggressive timeline here because we really want to get somebody in as quickly as possible. And of course, any input that you would think would be helpful in choosing a new superintendent, I would definitely like to hear from you. That's pretty much it for me.
All right, thanks. Sounds like a big meeting. John?
I have nothing to report.
All right, Lorian?
All right, since our last meeting, I did get to attend a swim meet. I want to give a huge shout out to our activities department that the announcement came that we could allow spectators at indoor sports the same day as the very last girls' home swim meet. And they got a process together that allowed people to come and watch. So that was incredible to see that last swim meet of the season here at home. So huge shout out to them, so thank you for that. That was fun to see those girls swim this season. And then I attended the chair meeting just prior to this.
All right, I think I've been able to take in some sporting events, which has been fun to watch the kids out being active. I know that's a challenge with the distance learning, being out of computers, so it's exciting to see them out moving their bodies. I also attended a chair meeting and was able to attend remotely the AMSD Association Metropolitan School District meeting, where we were updated on a lot of things. And as we talk, in the future, I'll have some items to share with you that I learned at those meetings that I thought were very interesting. So, at another time. Superintendent Stenvik, do you have a report for us?
I sure do. Thank you. We continue to monitor the local COVID-19 case rates, which remain high in our area. The admin team, including principals and directors, is incredibly collaborative. This team meets weekly to review operations and create ongoing and ever-changing plans. As you mentioned, Member Mueller, the same day, we get new guidance and have to do a quick turnaround for things like the swim meets, right? I also continue to meet weekly with about 40 superintendents across the metro area on the topic of COVID-19. This is through AMSD, and so those folks are sharing and learning together. Over the last two Saturdays, I attended the Minnesota School Board Association Phase 3 training on high-performing school board team. One item to note is that they provided the Year at a Glance checklist for new school board member orientation, which may be a helpful tool, as that's one of the goals. And I have to say, it was an excellent training, and I'm really looking forward to Phase 1 and 2 coming up in 2021. Here at school, it's been really wonderful to see small groups of students on campus. And the schools have sent out surveys for families, students, and staff, so I'd like to encourage folks to fill out those surveys if possible. It will help in the planning for quarter 2. Prior to this meeting, I attended the chair meeting and the school board candidate forum, and also was able to have conversations with Director Samurai, and I want to thank you for your time.
All right, thanks so much. We will move on to Director of Human Resources Lindsey Bennett for the tenure teacher recognition. And I have to say, Lindsey, I'm just a teensy bit sad because I do look forward to those cookies or cupcakes and getting to actually meet all of these very excited teachers in real life and shake some hands. But I get that a COVID situation is probably not great for shaking hands. So, take it away.
Well, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, maybe next year we'll have to do a double celebration and we'll catch up everybody else. But this year, we still do want to recognize 15 staff members that did achieve tenure. And we did a little bit different. We had a video made, so each principal said a few words. And then Daniel Berg at Valley View was kind enough to help us out putting the video together. So I'm going to pass it off to Director Hennigens to play the video.
Hopefully.
It's my pleasure tonight to be able to recognize 15 staff members who achieved tenure with Columbia Heights Public Schools as of July 1st. Most years, we have a big celebration before the board meeting. This year, it's a little bit different, but we still wanted to recognize each of them and have their principal say a few words. Congratulations.
Good evening. At the high school, we are celebrating two teachers for tenure. Our first one is in our English department, Mr. Chris Pauley. Chris has done a sensational job in building HNN News as well as our 12th grade English classes and Film Studies. He's great at building relationships with our kids and is an asset to our English department. Our second tenured person is Michelle Dietz. Michelle's in our Art Department and is a whiz at ceramics. She's great at building relationships and has been an asset to the team of our Art Department. Congratulations to both of you.
It's my pleasure to introduce to you the newly tenured teachers from Columbia Academy. First, we have Molly McDonald, who teaches in our Science Department. Molly is now our department chair, actually, in Science, and she has done a marvelous job leading our team in curriculum writing and PLCs. We're so proud to have her on our team. Also in Science, we have Alex Mack. Alex came at the same time as Molly, and they have transformed the science program at Columbia Academy. Along with their colleagues, we have got quite the Science Department. So congratulations to them both for all of their good work in Science at Columbia Academy. We also have, returning to Columbia Academy, Katie Maldees. Katie was at the middle school for many years, teaching science and math, and she left for some time and then came back. Now, as an ASD Setting 3, she, I think, is one of the best educated teachers out there, licensed in so many different ways, and wow does she run an amazing program. So we are very, very pleased to have Katie back, anchoring our ASD program at Columbia Academy. In English, we have Holly O'Neill. Holly came to us straight out of college, and she has become such an amazing teacher. Students love to be in her class. She has a gentle, calm spirit and a great sense of humor that keeps her class moving each and every day. A big congratulations to her. And finally, we have Ariel Orkut, who does our honors math in 8th grade. She is also our robotics coach and has taken our team to state. We are extremely pleased to have her now as a tenured teacher on our math team and are continuing to be our robotics coach. Congratulations, all of our newly tenured teachers. We have quite a team at Columbia Academy.
Good evening. I'm John Frye, I'm the Director of Special Ed here in Columbia Heights Public Schools. I get the opportunity to recognize Hillary Rice. Hillary is a special educator at Highland Elementary. Hillary's been with us for a little bit over a year, and in her time so far, she showed a lot of flexibility and her ability to be flexible in meeting the needs of students, meeting them where they're at, and ensuring that progress and growth is happening on state standards. Hillary also shown a lot of positivity, both with her students as well as with her colleagues. I think this positivity shines through in her work with parents and with students. So Hillary, congratulations on getting tenured. We're so happy for you. Thank you.
This year, we are tenuring two teachers at North Park Elementary, and I'm fortunate to talk about each of them this evening. First is Bob Lilidahl. Bob is the teacher in our Setting 3 DCD program for our severe, profound students. And, you know, just like any teacher in such a program, he has as big a heart as any other person has. He goes above and beyond for our kids every day. But one of his great talents that we haven't always had here is he's an incredible leader of his team. He has built a team of non-licensed people to just really be a well-oiled machine, and they propel our kids every single day, our most vulnerable kids, to meet their potential. And so we're very fortunate to have Bob at North Park. And it is also a pleasure for me to speak of Ms. Trisha Johnson, who's a 2nd grade teacher in North Park. And it really, it seems like Trisha's been here forever because she was a student teacher in our 3rd grade learning studio. And the moment that she walked in, it really appeared that she was someone that was going to make North Park a better place and someone that we definitely wanted to hang on to. Trisha has a particular knack in innovating ways to intervene with students who are struggling in multiple ways. Students who struggle academically, students who struggle socially and emotionally. Those are exactly the kind of students that Trisha excels with the most. And she's just, she's another teacher we are quite fortunate to have at North Park. So congratulations, Trisha. And then there's Katie Hale. This is the second time that she has been tenured in Columbia Heights Public Schools. And, you know, what can you say about a master teacher? I mean, she is just that. She is absolutely a master. Last summer, we lost one of our veteran 4th grade teachers to a district-wide job, and we were really fortunate to be able to talk Katie into coming back to Heights and to North Park. She's been a wonderful addition to a young team. She's added some veteran presence, even though she's not exactly old herself, and has, in short order, helped to build one of the strongest teams that we have at North Park. So congratulations, Katie Hale.
Congratulations, Naomi, on receiving tenure. We're so glad that you're a part of the Columbia Heights Public School family.
I would like to give a huge shout out to Kristin Ellingbo, Carly Ross, and Beth Larson for achieving tenure in Columbia Heights Public Schools. They are an intricate part of our school community and wonderful additions to the Columbia Heights family. Thank you and congratulations on achieving tenure.
All right, thank you so much. I can't remember who Lindsey said put that together, but we want to thank you for the video and all the kind words, and we're so thankful for our tenured staff. Do we have any discussion? Is that okay, Director Bennett, if we add discussion? All right. Did you have anything else to add before we asked questions? I forgot to mention.
No, and it was Daniel Berg at Valley View that helped us out, so...
All right. Well, thank you to Daniel. Any questions or comments from board members?
I just think congratulations. It's always, obviously, one of their early-on goals, and 15 people accomplish that, so good for them. Congratulations.
Yeah, it's awesome.
I think we owe them a cake and flower, too, don't we?
Yeah, they normally have a flower. That's right.
The corsage.
Holla, I saw you unmute there.
Yep, I just want to say congratulations to all these wonderful teachers. It's a big deal in a teaching career to achieve tenure in a district, and this is an especially different and hard year. So I just want to congratulate them again.
All right, thank you so much for that. We'll move on to Strategic Direction A, Improve Our Schools' Experience and School Climate. And presenter will be Bondo Nwembe, Executive Director of Educational Services, and again, Lindsey Bennett, Director of Human Resources.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, tonight, we are here to present Strategic Direction A, which is Improving Each Student's Experience and School Climate. So we always begin with our mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And with this core value, or with this strategic direction, it really does focus on all the core values. It is an informational update, and there will be no governance questions. And again, we're focusing on A, which is Improving Each Student's Experience and the School Climate. So I will start. The first measure is the number of licensed staff participating in health and wellness professional development. And from last school year to this school year, we did go from progressing to vision. Last December 23rd, right before winter break, we were able to have a professional development day, which included time for staff to focus on themselves. There was yoga classes, healthy cooking, organization classes that were offered to all licensed staff.
The second measure, A1.2, Student Consistent Attendance, is also a measure that is used by the Department of Education to support the Every Student Succeed Act. In FY19, we were at a baseline, which was right around 74% to 84%. Unfortunately, this year, last year for FY20, we don't have any data available. This data is calculated by the Minnesota Department of Education, and as of September 30th, 2020, the data was not available. So we will report back on this measure when the data becomes available.
The next measure is all staff absences for personal illness. We did go from vision down to intervention, and that is because we did have an increase from 4-year 19 to 4-year 20. It is something we monitor, but again, this year is kind of a difficult year to really determine absences as we had measured the year before. The next one is Staff Wellness Benefit Outreach Initiatives, and we are still vision for this. We included, we have a wellness funds that we get through our health insurance co-op. So we're able to offer wellness bags, wellness outreach, so about healthy cooking, how to take care of yourself. We did an online yoga meditation class last spring. We also have our benefit specialists, who did go out and meet with many of the groups to discuss our benefits that we have, along with some of the extra offerings we have, such as a weight loss program, and also what your benefits entail.
The next measure, 1.5, Student Sense of Social/Emotional Security. We conduct a climate survey annually in our school district to be able to arrive to the data. In FY19, we were at the baseline data, and in FY20, we remain at the FY, we remain at the baseline data. So it is important to know how we arrive to this data. We calculate this data using the average from all our schools in grade 4, 7, and 9. And so for this year, students reported an average of 2.95, which is right in the middle of the baseline data here. Equally important, these measures are arrived by looking at a scale. And so the scale for this one goes from a negative range to a positive range, and the negative range is less than 2.5. The neutral range is 2.5 to about 3.5, and the positive range is 3.5 and higher. And so for FY20, we remain at the baseline range because we score about 2.95. And can we go to the next slide? On the Strategic, Strategic Direction A, Improve Our Student Experience and School Climate, 8.2, 8.21, Student Sense of Physical Security, again, using the climate survey, we are at a baseline range, just like in FY19. You know, here again, we're using a scale similar to the one I described above. And, you know, given the pandemic, we will take what we have.
The next item is the Employee Retention Rate, and we were able to go from progressing to vision. So we're over 95% with employee retention. And then Staff Satisfaction with Working Conditions, that also increased, and it was an 89%. And the interesting thing is, this survey went out at the beginning of April 2020. So right as we are starting the distance learning, and staff, also more, you know, working from home, but still those that were here, did feel satisfaction with the working conditions at Columbia Heights Public Schools.
Well, the final data, which I think is quite encouraging, is the discipline data, where we look at out-of-school suspension. You know, unlike the other metrics we looked at, we did pretty well with reducing our suspension rate. In FY19, we were at the high concern, anywhere between from 301 to 350. But this year, we're at vision. We actually had less than 200 out-of-school suspensions. And to be exact, that number was under 160. And so, as we always do with all our strategic areas, we set goals for the next school year. So here are some of the goals that we've set. So we will continue with the Wellness and Benefit Outreach Initiatives for staff to ensure that their well-being is cared for. We will survey families, staff, and students multiple times during the year to support their social, emotional needs. We've already conducted a survey to measure the progress of our Heights From Home that we released last Friday, and we will be getting the data a week from now. We will also continue to provide professional development for staff to support social, emotional learning. And with that, we conclude our presentation.
Molly, thank you. Would you mind if I open to questions?
Please go ahead.
All right, thank you. Do we have any board members with questions or comments? Lorian?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you for presenting that data. Regarding the out-of-school suspension data, it's obviously excellent to see vision in that area. Does that take into consideration, obviously, students being in distance learning March through June? And do we have, well, I guess I'll, okay, so that's question one. And then if that is the case, do we have any data from last year to, and this year, the FY19, FY20, for the same time period that didn't involve the distance learning piece?
Oh, if I make a mistake, so Lieutenant Stenvik will correct me. So during distance learning, we did not suspend students. And so this data does not include, that doesn't have any distance learning suspensions. And so the second question, how are we doing this year? We haven't suspended any children during Heights From Home. We, we have... We, we have a team that consists of assistant principal and myself, and we meet once a month. We had our first meeting a week ago, and we talked about a virtual classroom. And in the virtual classroom, we discussed what are the potential concerns that may arise, and how will we address those concerns? And the conversation from each of the team members had more to do with, how do we increase our level of engagement for students and for teachers? And, and there was also a question about what type of behaviors are we seeing in the virtual classroom? The concerns were more about attendance, but not necessarily behavior. You know, it's, it's on Zoom, so if a student doesn't want to be in class, they just won't show up. And so that's how we're dealing and addressing the out-of-school suspension this year.
And if I can ask a follow-up?
I think Superintendent Stenbik, did you want to hear the follow-up question, or did you want to add?
Both. So with Executive Director Nimway not here last spring, if I'll just add and fill in a little bit as well. Last, you know, at the end of last school year, the, that team, that discipline team did review the data of the same time period from one school to the other. And we've really seen a three or four-year trajectory downward in the number of out-of-school suspensions. So really a positive trend there. One thing that the team was working on last year and will continue to work on this year is that reducing disproportionality is based on race and ethnicity and setting, so special education or not, in our discipline that arises. So that is still an area that we're working on, and that, when we did measure from the March and prior, two years in a row, overall downward trend, but still working on that disproportionality piece.
Good, thank you. That was pretty much my follow-up. I think I didn't ask it quite right. But obviously, looking at us being at vision, but we're missing three and a half months' worth of in-school class time. So just as long as your team is monitoring timeframe to timeframe, which makes sense, it doesn't include that distance learning, and it's still a focus, and then the disproportionality. So thank you for, for that, and thank you, Director Nimway. I appreciate that information as well.
Oh, I saw, oh, sorry to interrupt. What were, what did you say, Director Nwembe?
I say she was welcome.
All right, okay, thank you. Hala, I saw you unmute. I don't know if she covered your question, or do you have another one?
That was one of my questions, so, but thank you for answering that. The other question I had was, Lindsay, when you were talking about employee satisfaction with the workplace in the spring, you mentioned, and I don't know if this was just a, if you misspoke, but I heard you say that it was for the staff who were here. Was this part, were the staff who were working from home, was their feedback taken into account even though they're not in the physical workplace?
Yes, so I probably said it wrong. The survey goes out to everybody in April, so it's those staff onsite and not onsite. But it was just a good combination of staff around site that felt the working conditions were good, and then staff that were working from home felt the conditions were good. So it went out to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Laura?
I was, I was just, as far as the out-of-school suspensions, will we be able to see some of that data there to see if we're moving those numbers as far as making sure that they're, there's, they're not disproportionate? You know, I know that there was an awful lot of work that went into that a couple of years ago about making sure that, that we had specific, specific behaviors where we were, were treated in a specific way. And I'm trying to remove, you know, remove the, the potential for for it being treated one way and one way, you know, and another. So I would love to see if we've made a lot more progress on that, and if we're, and if we're not in some areas, if we're going to be reviewing some of those disciplinary actions.
Yeah, the short answer is yes. The work that started last year, everybody's still on the team, and we are continuing with the work, and I don't see why it will change so that we can continue to get positive results.
Okay, thank you.
If I may add?
Yeah.
In addition to the regular data reporting, we're also looking at, how can we take advantage of these, this new technology or the new ways of doing things? And how does that apply to supporting our students who have, you know, different needs that sometimes display themselves as, as discipline? So we're really trying, you know, thinking as we move forward and at some point getting back to whatever the new normal is going to be, how can we utilize some of the things that we've been, we've learned over the last six months that would apply and support students as well? Really trying to take advantage of that.
I was also wondering about the success you found, or all the time that was put into the student right handbook. Has that been, have you found, or I know it would be anecdotal, but have you found that that time was good return on investment? Has that come into play, Director Nimway, or Lindsay?
Yes, so, you know, upon starting here, Superintendent Stenbik and I met, and she gave me a little crash course on the history and a direction of where we should go. And so one of the first activities that was done was look back at the student right and responsibility handbook, updated based on the input from the social workers, the principals, and the assistant principal who have been doing the work to ensure that there was uniformity in the language, and to add language that is directly related to online platform, and basically putting in place elements that will continue to sustain the good work. And so it is our hope that we will sustain it by continuing to communicate with our staff and communicate with our families.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I don't see any other questions. So thanks for joining us tonight. We appreciate your time. And we will move on to action items. The first one is Director Henneken's, and you will be talking to us about bids for Valley View's boiler plant.
Thank you, Chair Severson, Members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik. This evening, the first item that I have is Valley View Boiler Plant Bids. So this is a request to forbid authorization. So it's a request to the board to give us authorization to go out for bid for a new boiler plant at Valley View Elementary. Valley View Elementary actually currently does not have its own boiler plant. It receives its heat from Columbia Academy next door. And they currently have one single steam line that feeds steam or our heat over to that building. And so that is a single point of failure. That pipe is aging. And actually, a few years ago, we had the pipe over at, between the high school and Highland Elementary burst during heating season. And so we had some emergency repairs that were very costly, and that next year, we did put a boiler plant at Highland. So this was a plan, long-term facilities, along with capital projects, levy dollars. I think mostly capital projects levy dollars will fund this project, because most of it won't qualify for LTFM. But again, it's, 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 it is going to be a big project, but necessary. And, and I think the principal would echo that, as we had some problems getting heat to them at the start of this heating season, feeding from Columbia Academy. So again, this is a proposal in front of you for approval to allow us to go out for bid authorization.
All right. Have a motion, move that forward?
It's moved. Second.
Lorian, John the Second. Discussion. I guess I'll lead off with a question, and this probably is the case, but I would like to hear. Is there a space designated for a boiler? Is it similar to what we saw at Highland?
It's, yes. Good question. It is identical. So at, both those buildings originally did have their own boiler plants. And, and, you know, through remodels of the past, they decided that it would be more efficient to utilize the boiler plants at the bigger buildings, because they had the capacity to do so. Unfortunately, the way that they fed the buildings, it just, it creates a very big problem for us now down the road as the pipes are older, or the one pipe is older, and it causes that single point of failure. With the new high-energy efficient boilers, we can, we can much more efficiently heat those buildings with new boilers in those buildings than utilizing our old. So there is a space, and it's identical to the space at Highland, so it's very, very close to identical project.
Other questions? Can't believe it, Lorian.
I know.
Brian's heart would be going pitter-patter right now.
Brian's anticipated all my questions and answers them in his presentation.
We're getting better at it.
He can read, he can read our minds now. Put that in his personnel report again. All right, we have a motion, no more questions, so let's do a roll call vote, please, Molly.
Mr. Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. Bid for a boiler. Director Henneken's, again, with the North Park Elementary windows, bid authorization.
Thank you, Chair Severson, Members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik. You know, 'tis the season for getting our big projects off for the summer. So this one may surprise some people, but the, we've talked about this in the past as far as North Park Elementary, and that it's, there's a lot of funds that are coming together to complete that building. And, and, you know, combined with LTFM, long-term facility maintenance dollars, capital project levy dollars, regular capital dollars, and bond project dollars. And those other funds are limited, and in our plans, we've always had forecasted not only roofs, you know, we've continued, we did some roofs last year at North Park through long-term facility maintenance dollars. So there's things that we're going to continue to do in the buildings that these funds are there for already. And the remainder of the windows are one of those things. So we just finished up with Valley View Elementary windows this past summer, and doorways. And so we want to finish off of that building. And really, again, anybody that's had an old building or old house know how much a new energy-efficient window can improve heating and cooling within their building. So the remainder buildings, windows are original 1966 windows in that building. So, and this will be fully funded from long-term facility maintenance dollars. And again, a motion in front of you is to authorize us to go out for bids for those windows.
All right. Could I get that motion, please?
It's moved.
Laura? Second, Molly. I saw the hand raised and the voice. There we go. So Laura then Molly. Discussion. Laura?
I just had a quick question. If I remember correctly, we were going to do this a couple of years ago? Or am I incorrect on that? And then we had the other, we had something else come up?
That was, that was actually Valley View got delayed a year. So Valley View was next in line, and they were supposed to happen two summers ago, and it got delayed. And we ended up doing it last summer, or this past summer.
Yeah, it could be, I think it was because of the, the steam pipe that went underneath this building, right?
Yes, a lot of the, you know, that, that was a very costly piece that definitely delays things. When, when failures in pipes, you know, cost us over, you know, cost us six figures to repair, something's got to give. So I think that's, again, why it's important to do that Valley View Boiler Plant and make sure that we don't have that single point of failure. Because at Highland, we were lucky. It was, it was spring. It was 40-some degrees. We made it. We got the emergency repair done in time. I think it burst on Friday, so we had the weekend to work on it. So, I mean, it's a lot of, you know, could have been worse, could have been worse, and, you know. So we definitely, it's important that we do some of these projects to make sure that we don't have those issues.
Yeah, okay. I was just, I was just curious, because I seem to remember putting, putting, putting windows off because of another project. So, but that was always on the table, just had to do it later. So, all right, that's it.
All right, more questions? All right, Molly, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. It's the trifecta here for you.
That's right.
We'll move on to the operation of bid publication for the high school fax room.
All right, Chair Severson, Members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik. The last item that I have is a high school fax room remodel bid authorization. So the high school fax room is, in general, a big part of that room is original, original cabinetry, original countertops. The cabinets did get a touch of paint at one point. But the countertops are delaminating in a very bad shape, which obviously, when you have the wood that's underneath there, it's, it's very tough to keep them clean and sanitized. And it is, there's a lot of problems, ventilation, you know, that hasn't been upgraded over the years. And current code calls for hoods on all the stoves to provide that proper ventilation. Electrical needs in that space for all the new appliances that they use. So there's a lot of, the HVAC system is undersized. So when all the stoves are running and 36, 38 kids are in that classroom, it's, it's, it can get a little stuffy. So it's, it's well-needed, and we, we're getting close to having a plan. We've been visiting other districts. So again, this is just authorize us to go out for bid for this project, and we can see where our numbers come in. And this, this in part would be mostly funded through long-term facilities maintenance, and then there were probably some capital dollars that'll, that'll feed into this as well, but mostly long-term facility maintenance dollars. So again, the motion in front of you is to authorize us to publish for bids for remodeled the fax room.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to move this one forward?
It's moved.
John, a second?
Second.
Lorian, on a second. Discussion. You've exhausted us, Brian. Molly, if you wouldn't mind a roll call, please.
Mr. Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. We're going to move on to the repeal of policy 522. So we're going to do board policy second reading soon, and so we're going to ask the board, the board will be asked to repeal school board policy 522, the Student Sex Non-Discrimination Act. And it will be replaced in the following motion with a new 522, Title IX Sex and Non-Discrimination Policy Grievance Procedure and Process, along with the other policies that will be added if we so approve. The reason we did this is because the initial policy was fairly short. It's, it went from four pages to 17 pages. Sorry, Laura, I know you like short policies. Due to some state legislation that we needed to update our policies, so we decided it would be much easier to just remove it and replace it. So I am looking for a motion to repeal policy 522.
It's all moved.
It's all moved.
I'm going to give it to Molly, Lorian. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, thanks. You can have the second. Lorian has a second. I need a discussion. All right, hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. Great. We will go on to board policies, the second reading, and we'll be, I'm asking you to approve the updates to the following items. 419 Tobacco-Free Environment Process, Possession and Use of Tobacco, Tobacco-Related Devices and Electronic Delivery Advisors. 422 Policies Incorporated by Reference. 522, the Title IX Sex Non-Discrimination Policy Grievance Procedure and Process, and the form, the 522 form accompanying that. 534 Unpaid Meal Charges. 535 Service Animals in Schools. 541 Teller-Related Services Policy. 902 Use of School Facilities. And these policies appeared on the September 22nd, 2020 meeting for review. And I will be asking for a motion to approve these now. I get a motion?
So moved.
John, can I get a second?
Second.
I, can I give it to Hala there, Laura? I saw the.
Absolutely.
I saw the hand. Hala, is that a second?
Yes, it is.
All right, thanks. I feel responsible for those internet folks that just have just enough lag. All right, so we have a motion from John and a second from Hala. Any discussion on this?
I think a conversation we always have on second reading, because they've been posted previously, there been? Any questions or concerns that people have come forward with?
We have received none.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Other discussion items? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
The Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right. I think that is what we have tonight. Don, can I just get a thumbs up from you that I have all the motions and seconds I need tonight?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Don. All right, we'll move on to board topics. Does anybody have any board topics? Feels a little bit like a bummer not to have fun board topics, doesn't it?
I can add one thing.
Thank you.
If I may.
Thank you.
Just a reminder that the varsity football team is, in fact, playing a game at home this Thursday, and tickets are available online. There is a limited number, but we hope to fill up the stands with the two fifty that we're able to.
Is that something that will be on our new streaming service also?
Yes, the streaming service will work in the stadium and also in the main gym. Those are the two areas, and then, of course, here in the community room, the boardroom.
All right, thank you. And do you have the access? Do you not, can, can you tell parents how to access that? Is that via the website?
It would be on the website, correct.
Okay, thank you. Parents are fans, you can also watch it that way. Great, other topics? All right, hearing none, I will conclude the meeting at seven fifty-nine PM. Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you for tuning in.